I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education to order, please. Welcome, everybody. If you would like to speak in public audience, I would like to ask you to please go over to the chair and that microphone. And you are welcome to do that. With that said, we have recognitions tonight?
Yes.
We'll start with that.
Big recognitions this evening. Today, we have many students, staff, support staff here for a major recognition from the Connecticut Association of Schools, the Connecticut Interscholastic Athletic Conference, Unified Sports, and the Connecticut Special Olympics. So I'm actually going to turn this over to Athletic Director and Clubs and Activities Director Jeff Penny for some introductions.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us and thank you to everyone who came out tonight. Bob Hale, who I'll be introducing this evening, served as the principal at Westbrook High School for over 20 years, where he enjoyed a lengthy career as a teacher and administrator, serving as a member of CAS during his time there. After that, he joined CIC Unified Sports in 2015 and became the Executive Director in 2019, and now currently the Director of Unified Sports and Special Olympics. We get to see Bob a couple of times a year. We run multiple tournaments at Simsbury High School, and it's always a joy to have him. He is fantastic at bringing together people and advocating for Special Olympics and runs amazing programs throughout the state, and we love the opportunity to continue to work with him. And we had the opportunity, the last two years, to be recognized for two major awards. In 2020, we received the Michael's Cup Award for Outstanding Unified Sports Program at Simsbury High School. And Bob, I'm going to introduce him. He'll tell you the award that we won tonight. But the background on the award that we're getting this evening is every four years, you're allowed to submit a proposal to Special Olympics and be determined as a national champion school. So if you may remember, five years ago now, we had ESPN come in and we did a major school event. That award that we won, we're receiving again this evening because we won that award again this year. So that's why Bob's here today.
Yeah, that's really great.
Go over to Bob then.
Well, thanks for having me. It's been a while since we've scheduled this whole thing with all the restrictions and everything, so we're glad that we could have folks here tonight for this. And you give me way too much credit because there are so many people around the state and all the work, and I just say yes, yes, yes. But it's an honor to do that. Yeah, as Jeff was talking, we were out here just after the pandemic to award Simsbury in a parking lot ceremony their official banner for the Michael's Cup, which is our Outstanding Program of the Year Award. And we had a great time at the ceremony, but it's not as fancy as usual. We did it again last night for this year's winner at the AquaTurf and with all the bells and whistles, but we had bells and whistles, but it was just different. But nonetheless, well deserved. For the banner recognition, it's a national program. And Unified Sports, they call it Unified Champion Schools, is the national organization. They have three tiers to their program, three prongs, if you will. Unified Sports is one of them. That's the one everybody knows about. And then inclusive youth leadership is another thread that they emphasize, and whole school engagement. So to be honored with this banner, it's not a competition, you just have to meet the criteria. So there's 10 standards, you have to answer 10 very poorly worded questions. But they figured them out, they had the right answers. You have to play more, at least two or more sports, and Simsbury plays at least four. And I think since the application, they've added, because I think, did you guys get cornhole boards from us yet? Yeah, so cornholes definitely on the list now, in addition to soccer, flag football, basketball, track and field, and volleyball. And as you're no doubt aware, the basketball team, we have members of the team that are going to be traveling to Orlando to represent Connecticut at the Special Olympics USA game. And thanks, gang, for being on that team, because now I get to go. And, you know, teams have to practice regularly, and when I was looking over the application today to remind myself, they have like an extensive practice schedule, way more than most unified programs. They have to have the school support, they have to be an official recognized program of the school. And I know Simsbury High School does that, but they're in pep rallies, they get varsity letters, they're supported by the budget, so they need to be recognized as sustainable. Certainly, that's not a problem with this Rell Story program. And they have to have, you know, and last night, we honored Avery Daw and Megan Alonso with our Teammate of the Year Award. And in the inclusive youth leadership area, there has to be opportunities for participation, not just in sports, but your kids have the opportunity to participate in wellness, E-class, Unified Art Class, Unified Theater, and I'm sure there's many more opportunities that we're just scratching the surface on there. In terms of engaging the whole school, Jeff mentioned that big ESPN pep rally you had the first time, you're only eligible for that once. And you've got the banquet plunge, assisting, when you guys host the basketball tournament, everybody turns up, the varsity teams help out, the pep band was there just a couple of months ago when we were there, really a nice community atmosphere. And I've got to say, Jeff and Steve and Sue and your whole administrative team shows up to support your kids first and foremost, and us, and the other teams that are around, that are coming from around the state. So we really appreciate that. It doesn't happen everywhere. And even during restrictions, this team was getting together virtually, in person when they could, but they really made a devoted effort to keep themselves connected and engaged, and especially for some folks who can easily get disengaged and not be connected. That's really critical. And they culminate the end of the year with a banquet, just like any other sports team might. They give out their awards, and then they enjoy what can, I guess, be a 45-minute-long video of the highlights of the season. So that is spectacular.
Yeah.
So with all that said, I could probably go on, but you have other things to do. I'd like to have Justin come up and help me out, because he has the requisite skills.
I tried to roll this myself before, and I just look awkward. I suppose he's going to handle it, we're going to have to hold it way up. So here is your, here we go. Here is your.
Oh, fantastic.
And I, I don't know how you want to do it, but we should have the rest of the team up here.
If you would all go up, let's get a picture of everybody pleased with the banner.
Yeah, come on up.
We'd love to have you all up there.
Just so I can hold it higher, and then you guys, because you've got the crowd in front.
Can we dim this?
Yeah, I'm wondering if we can, so it doesn't create some glare.
Shut off.
That would be great.
Shut off the light, we're down.
As long as we can turn it back on again.
I was just going to say.
That is the risk.
Yeah.
We need to shut off the projector.
The projector, yeah.
Is that what you wanted, the projector?
Yeah, so it's not on the banner.
It's not glaring.
Come on over to this side.
Mr. Hale won't bite today. Not today, though, Mr. Hale. There we go.
Thank you.
That's great.
We've got a lot of proud family members taking pictures, too.
Do you need us to get out of the way?
You can sit down, little. Take your mask down.
There you go. Excellent.
Thank you.
Now, thank you for all your support for your program and all the staff members involved, and ultimately, unfortunately, all the kids.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for coming. Appreciate it.
We don't need it till Jan goes up.
Okay. Very proud to display that.
Yes.
Look forward to that. With that said, we are moving on to public audience. So again, if you have anything you would like to say, please go to the microphone in the front corner of the table.
But Susan, just want to add, it's just, it really is a unified front to receive this recognition.
Absolutely.
The staff members, the families, the students, hours and hours and hours to get this recognition around, which really is about teamwork and inclusion. So we apologize that our backs are to you, everyone, but very proud. Thank you so much.
All set up. But thank you all for coming out tonight, and thank you for all the work you do for the program.
Hi, I'm Lori Boyko. I live at 15 Will Kirsch Road in Simsbury. And I had edited this a little bit because I thought we were going before, but that's okay. A quote widely attributed to Desmond Tutu, although I'm not entirely sure he's the original source, says, "There comes a point where we need to stop pulling people out of the river."
Can you hear? Can't hear you.
If I yell, does it mess up the mic? Okay.
I don't think it's picking, I don't think it's picking you up.
The microphone is off. It judges broadcast, it's a limited broadcast. It's only for TV. So your microphone is not playing.
Yeah, I just didn't want to blow out my mic.
They can adjust.
I could be loud. Yeah, okay, I'll start over. A quote widely attributed to Desmond Tutu, although I'm not entirely sure he's the original source, says, "There comes a point where we need to stop pulling people out of the river. We need to go upstream and find out why they're falling in. Regardless of who truly originally said it, there is merit to the meaning. One rare thing on which I believe we all agree is that our kids are struggling. The teens for sure, but the middle schoolers are struggling too, and many of our younger children are experiencing issues not seen before. We talk at school meetings, scouts, sports, coffee shops, and on whispered phone calls about experiences we've had with our children, struggles they're all dealing with, as if they're isolated incidents or typical teenage strife. Our solution is more lines at the ER, more mental health providers, more social workers at schools. We're attempting to put a Band-Aid on a hemorrhage, but the actual causes of the bleeding are being ignored. For the better part of a year, I've sat and listened to the latest dogma about the social and emotional learning being implemented in our schools. Dogma is defined as a principle or set of principles laid down by an authority as incontrovertibly true. But authorities aren't always right, and what if, in this case, their theories aren't true? What if what we thought was a good idea for teachers to be teaching group therapy to improve the social and emotional learning of children wasn't a good idea at all? In fact, what if it was doing more harm than good? Is that an experiment we really want to be conducting on our children? I don't have all of the answers, but I do know we're not asking enough questions."
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak?
I think over here, Susan.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see. Go ahead, sit down.
I'm Katie Boyle. I am a Latimer parent of a fourth grader and second grader. My second grader will be going into third next year, obviously. A bunch of parents brought to my attention that class sizes for seconds going into third are potentially being reduced, increased, and the number of classrooms reduced. And I just simply wanted to get out there the fact that we are concerned about that because it's the one-on-one relationships with kids, teachers have with kids, that solve a lot of problems that, or bring to our attention, problems such as your, what you just spoke on. I just started working at the Crick School on Latimer Lane. I'm teaching biology, and it's the first time I'm teaching in my whole life. I just started full-time there, and it's a relationship-based school, like our goal there, because the kids have behavioral diagnoses, so the goal for us is to get kids to come to school. So it's, the content is wonderful if you can get it to land, but the idea is, you know, bonding with the kids. And I, I mean, I had two kids in class today, so like, there's ample opportunity for building relationships. But you can imagine in a class of 24, 25, a third-grade teacher having quite a lot of difficulty keeping consistency with their classroom, minimizing disruptions. And, I mean, you all know the data on reduced, smaller class sizes being overall better for learning. So I am concerned about that, and I know a lot of other parents, I have a group of 35 of us that are chatting and worried, and I just simply wanted to bring that to your attention. We would love to have some sort of solution where it's not, you know, 25 kids in a class. If it's, and we're, you know, compromising on a pod, because I know Latimer is about to start, you know, going to be starting construction in the next couple of years. So we are, you know, would love to just be part of the solution, and, you know, however, whatever makes sense, we'd love to just not close the book on that.
Thank you.
And that's everything.
All right. We appreciate you coming. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak?
That's going to come on now, I can see it, the green light.
Sorry, go ahead.
Hi, Elizabeth Peterson, 32 Fox Den Road. I wasn't originally going to speak, I came, it's a public meeting. Sitting in the second row of a public meeting, you would expect to be able to hear what's happening in the meeting. I don't think any of you did this on purpose, but I think it brings more to the point. It's also maybe at the chair, turn around and tell us, oh, you're not supposed to hear. I know you're joking, Susan, but at the same time.
No, I didn't say you're not supposed to hear. I said the microphone is for the TV, not for the room.
Yeah, well, it's for the TV. That's how I interpret it. But I think that this brings a bigger point. Any place I've lived, I've lived a lot of places, a set place in town where the Board of Ed meets. It's set up, it's ready to go, everybody's ready to sit, everybody can hear, and all the kings are always worked out. I appreciate where you guys are coming from, I'm not saying I'm right, but I think you guys should address that, because we have some really good facilities, even like, I'm just going to say Henry James, new auditorium. It's near the Board of Ed. It can be set up to always be able to hold the Board of Ed meeting, where everybody can hear. It can be set up so we can hear, so everything can be, can be ready to go, and so we don't have frustrating moments where people in the second row of your meeting are looking, can you hear? Can you hear? So I just think I'm pointing out the elephant in the room. Thanks a lot.
Appreciate it. Is there anybody else who wants to speak? Okay, with that said, we'll move on to communications and committee reports. Alex.
All right, starting off with the high school, we just finished three performances of Radium Girls over the weekend, which all went great. I saw it on Saturday, really nice job by everyone involved. NGSS testing will be held again this Thursday, so a late start for all other students besides juniors. And then also Friday will be junior prom.
Oh, that's fast.
Yeah.
Saturdays junior prom?
Moving on to Central.
And just NGSS.
Yeah.
National Next Generation Standards Testing. Okay, just so people know what we're talking about.
And then among other elementary schools, Central has announced their Paraprofessional of the Year, Mr. Steve Novy. We appreciate his warm and kind presence, helping kids across all grade levels. Last week, Central also held their kindergarten visitation for the 2022-23 school year, which has been successful, and we were able to meet many new parents and guardians. Both Central and Latimer held a celebration to honor staff members who have reached certain milestones in their careers last week, up to 38 years of involvement in our community. Also, a wonderful chorus concert was put on at Latimer by the sixth graders, so an extra special thanks to Ms. Mullough for organizing it. And then the Latimer Lane Art Show has been announced for May 4th and 5th, and Squadron Line has announced theirs for tomorrow and Thursday, with Ice Cream Social happening after, after, on Thursday. Also, Squadron Line has announced their concert schedule for the rest of the year, so the sixth grade choral concert will be on May 9th, fifth and sixth grade band concert will be on May 17th, and then the fourth through sixth grade string concert will be on May 31st.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I understand you have to leave early tonight, so you can go whenever you need to.
We've got a couple more minutes.
Sharon.
The only thing I'd like to say is congratulations to all of our Simsbury High School students that made it to honors and high honors. Congratulations. That's it.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention that the Congressman, John Hayes, put out the Congressional Art Awards for Connecticut, and we were lucky enough to have, we have students, 10 students presenting in that art show, which is very exciting. I would tell you where it is, but I forget. But it is very exciting to have participation in that Congressional Art achievement.
It will be in the fifth district, I would assume?
It's in the, at the Mottetuck Art Museum in Waterbury. That's our district. It's still our district. But it's, yeah, at the Mottetuck Museum.
Oh, fabulous. That's great. Thank you for sharing.
Nothing tonight, thanks.
We had a riveting policy meeting.
Riveting?
Riveting. We'll have lots to share with you soon, but really, nothing, nothing else going on.
You can't follow that.
No. Yeah, I'm still riveted.
You saved it for a Friday morning.
Well played.
So we did have a riveting staff recognition ceremony the day before the, the policy committee meeting. So congratulations to all those staff members that we honored over at Henry James in the ceremony that we had not been able to hold since 2019. So lots of retirees that were spoken about by their principals, and then we honor people with 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, 35 years of service. We heard from our Teacher of the Year, Christina Norrell, with some remarks. And we also named the district's Paraprofessional of the Year, and it's appropriate that we're at Terriffill School, because it's a Terriffill para named Julia Pugmeyer. So congratulations to Julia on.
Lisa.
Lisa.
Julia was her child.
Julia was her daughter.
I knew Julia Pugmeyer, so I'll give you that one.
Sorry.
You're showing some.
They also have a son there, Jack. I'm sorry. Lisa, I'm sorry. Thank you, Steve. And then just, I'm not, I don't, I just want to give a quick update, because people may be wondering in terms of a COVID update. It's not going to be surprising that we're following the trends of the region, that our cases are up over the last few weeks. People that are interested can continue to look at the dashboard. We do have test kits available, so any parent who wants to have a school nurse send a test kit home, we can certainly do that. And contact tracing, at this point, has shifted to our school nurses keeping an eye on what is defined as a cluster, which is if three or more cases come up in any particular classroom. And it's just been the last couple of days that we have experienced that. So that's been an extra layer of communication to those families to really encourage daily testing, think about wearing a mask, and we're working with the Farmington Valley Health District through all of those recommendations. So so far, definitely an increase in cases, but symptomology is mild, and we seem to be doing okay, and hopefully on the downward trend.
Let's hope.
Amy.
How's that? Thanks. Mrs. Hickey.
Just as Alex shared, a lot of end-of-year celebrations starting to come up already, so we're excited to hear about those. And as we celebrate the kind of conclusion of this year, we're also already thinking about next year and planning. One of the aspects of that is our school calendar. So the Board of Ed adopted our 22-23 school calendar last April, but there continues to be a lot of movement around those first three days of school. And we found that the early dismissals of those first three days are extremely helpful to kind of build that momentum with our students, but also to do some pretty substantial preparatory work with our staff. So although the Board of Ed does not set the early dismissal schedule or calendar, we would like to move forward with continuing that well-received trend with staff and students of having the first three days as early release days.
So we normally had three full days to start.
Over the past. Pre-pandemic, yes. And then we switched to early release days, and we've found those to be extremely beneficial on both sides of the equation. So wanted to make that suggestion and to share it with you. We would post this updated notation on our website and on, on the calendar on the website for the coming year.
We wrote it on the calendar, we just don't talk, but I would support a three-day short case, even though it's not necessary, we have to support it, but I do think that that is a very beneficial piece for the teachers as well, and staff as well as the students. And the heat's usually, and it's transitioning into, the heat's usually a little still, still hot, I think it's a great idea to have it to half-days.
Gentle way to start.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So my question, in addition to that, and I haven't looked at the calendar for a while, but does the calendar also identify PD days throughout the year?
Not, when we vote on it, it's not in there, because we're doing so far in advance. That happens.
That happens slightly thereafter, and then we post that in advance for the professional development.
But we know how many PD days are designated.
We just don't know when they are. We vote on the calendar, but before school starts, well before school starts, that full calendar is posted.
Okay, so that, so that if there's an early release day, we know that there's five PD days that are going to be within the next 90 days, and it will say it on the calendar, PD days?
Yes, so the P, the professional development days for next year are already noted on the calendar, and it will be posted on our website, is posted on our website, so families have well-advanced notice of when those will be.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All good. Anything else, ma'am?
That's it for me right now.
Okay, so I'm going to piggyback just on a couple of things. I got to go to the recognition day at Henry James, which was so nice to see everybody. As Chair, I haven't had that ability, so that was very fun for me. And as people in the business world know, we all change jobs a lot, and I commented on the fact that I actually added up all the years of service for the 2020 year, the 2021 and 2022 honorees for their milestones, not including retirees, and it was over 5,200 years of service, which is just astounding to me. There was actually somebody, and I'm going to forget who it was, who had 50 years of service in.
Dave Krum.
No, it was in, it was a couple of years ago, it was a woman. Oh, I'm going to mess up her name.
Lorraine Ry.
Ms. McKay.
Began with a J, last name begins with a J. She.
Studies, student studies.
Yes, yes.
She did student studies. Maggie Taylor.
CJ.
Brenda Goff.
Yes.
Oh, Kathy Gilena.
Kathy Gilena.
I had her for English.
Kathy Gilena, yep, yep, yep.
I was stunned that anybody worked anywhere for 50 years. Like, that is so unbelievable.
She's still around.
Unbelievably stunning.
She still works, just a lot of substitute teaching. She's an excellent teacher, I have to say.
God love her.
Being one of her students.
She did a good job with you.
Fantastic.
To the point that, Lizzy, I would like to say that we do our second Board of Ed meeting every month in a different school building, because it brings us closer to people in that part of the community, because not, no one really comes to our Board of Ed meetings in the boardroom. That is always fully set up and ready to go. But we like to actually see the schools and meet with the teachers in their home schools if we can. So one meeting a month, we do what I like to call the roadshow. That's my choice. I prefer that, as CTV cooperates with us greatly. And I'm very sorry for the setup of this room. If you're having trouble hearing us, we'll do our best to raise our voices, but we appreciate you coming out. So, um, with that, we're going to move on to recommended actions. I need, um, motion for the approval of the minutes of March 22nd.
Still moved. Second?
We got a one and a two over there?
Okay.
Um, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, approval of the minutes of the May 31st special meeting?
Still moved?
Anybody? Second?
Yeah, second.
Any discussion? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
It's standing.
One of the two extensions.
I'm sorry, who's the second chair? Angela?
Okay. Personnel?
Yep, two resignations, uh, for the board to, um, accept tonight. The first is a 4th grade teacher at Central, Kristen Pomeroy. Kristen has worked with us the last few years in a number of capacities as a math tutor, an EL tutor, done a number of long-term substitute elementary assignments for us. You'll recall that we were hiring a number of teachers right before the school year started, and Kristen sort of stepped forward, um, literally days before the school year started, took it on. It's been a lot. She did some reflecting over April vacations, and I'm going to take a step back, um, and figure out what the, and it may be returning to some of the roles she's done for us in the past, but she is going to resign this full-time position in grade four at Central School. Um, and the other sadly is, um, our recent administrative hire of Nishiria Sims Oliver, Assistant Principal at Squadron Line. Um, we had such a wonderful search process, um, last year, and we're thrilled to bring Nishiria on board. But shortly after she took the job, uh, her husband's work took him, uh, more than two hours away from here, um, in a, in a family business. So, um, it has been actually a very hard, um, uh, time for their family in terms of him working down in Southern New Jersey most of the time and commuting back to Connecticut, believe it or not. So, um, Nishiria is relocating to the Philadelphia area in, uh, New Jersey, but the greater Philadelphia area. She's already, not surprisingly, landed an assistant principal's job at a charter school down there. Um, so she was a hot commodity. I think several charter schools were vying for her, um, and she just settled on the one that will be her next home. So, um, the Squadron Line community is, uh, sad about this departure, um, as is, as are we, but, um, it's the right thing for Nishiria at this point in her life. So those resignations are both effective June 30th, and the motion is there.
Can I get somebody to make that motion, please?
Yeah, I'll move that the Board of Education accept the resignations of Kristen Pomeroy and Nishiria Sims Oliver effective June 30, 2022.
Second. Any discussion? Very sad to see Nishiria go, but understand that must have been quite the struggle and wish her all the best.
Yeah.
And, um, hope we see Kristen in another capacity.
Well...
With that, uh...
And I think it was especially challenging. You'll remember that Nishiria was actually appointed here at Terriffill.
Mm-hmm.
And I remember that, uh, her two Arthers were with her, her husband Arthur and her other Arthur's a very little guy.
Yes.
Yeah, so their family really needs to be together.
Hard road, yeah. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion passes.
Um, and then three, uh, recently announced retirements. Um, all elementary school teachers, the first, Marsha Gibbs, a wonderful, uh, gifted 1st grade teacher at, um, Tooton Hill School. You'll notice the symmetry here, all three of these teachers, 20 years in Sims, in Simsbury. Not quite sure how we got that all onto the same board meeting, but, uh, so Marsha notified me just a couple of weeks ago that she had made, uh, the determination to retire. And then, um, if you know Deb Lotstein and Tracy Zeiner, who are a grade five team up at Squadron Line, they do everything together, and they're retiring together. I got, the, the two emails came not 15 seconds apart. I had to be at my computer. Ding ding. Uh, they sent me the same exact reply after I accepted their resignation, um, and they are jointly, um, moving into, um, retirement at the end of the year after 20 years. Tracy in multiple grades, I know there used to be grade three and now five. Deb's been in five for a while. So, um, congratulations to those three wonderful elementary school teachers, and the motion is there for your consideration.
I'll, I'll do this one too. I'll, um, move that the Board of Education accept the retirements of Marsha Gibbs, Deborah Lotstein, and Tracy Zeiner effective June 30, 2022.
One second. Any discussion?
I just have a question after, but...
Okay.
Thank you very much for their service.
Yeah.
I mean, we're very lucky to have had them.
My kids, my daughter Kelly looped with Deb to, from 4th to 5th grade in 2004, '05. Had her for two years, so, um, she will be missed, uh, as will everybody else. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then Sharon, your question?
Yes. So Neil, you know, with these and the others, um, do you have a number on how many open positions we have right now for teachers?
Uh, well, there's, uh, there's the new ones that were in the budget process, which was about seven. Um, and then in terms of additional positions, um, it's, we've had some other shifts to some of the department. We have about 15 openings right now, right in that ballpark. We're in the process. We, um, we had a, a number of school psychologist positions to fill, um, and had very successful interviews today. Heard from many principals who participated in that, so I anticipate doing a number of those in the next few days. Um, these, um, Meg Evans interviewed also today, so we're in the process right now of filling for next year. I, uh, I participated, um, along with Cindy Frelinger in a number of recruiting fairs in the weeks before, um, vacation. Unfortunately, UConn was the only fair brave enough to do it in person. The others were still virtual. Um, and the Creck Minority Recruiting Fair is still to happen. I think it's May 5th, but they're virtual too, and I don't, I, I think it will probably remain virtual at this point. Um, and, you know, our hope as personnel directors with the group that I talk about, we, we really are trying to give feedback to these colleges. It's far more useful for your students and for us to come in person, and we hope we get back there, um, next year, so...
I would imagine.
Well, yeah, we have our teachers' teaching in person, so if they, it would be nice to see them.
And the kids, most of the kids are going to school in person, so it kind of doesn't seem like that big a stretch to do the fairs in person.
Yeah. So, but about, right now about 15, and that number is in flux all the time.
And, and with the recruitment that's happening next week, some of those openings have been shared there as well, I would think?
Every opening that we have is shared, the entire list is shared with any fair that we're going to. Every opening is on our website. Every opening is on, um, CT REAP is the, is the, uh, website that if you're looking for a teaching job in Connecticut, that's where you're going to go. The colleges also use a platform called Handshake that we've been using, uh, more frequently lately. And then, um, while print ads have kind of gone out of style, um, what we will do, um, and they're quite expensive actually, we will put a whole bunch of positions for the season out. So if you are a Stella classified ads person, the Hartford Current recently had, uh, we, you know, we put all of our positions out so that people might see it. But I would say when we have a box on our application that says, "How did you hear about us?", um, and the two most checked boxes from recruiting are word of mouth and CT REAP.
What about substitute teaching? How are we doing there?
Substitute teachers, uh...
Because I know there's been a, a...
Yeah, we're, we're better than most. We're not, we're not 100%.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, uh, I mean, there are, there are positions that go unfilled each day, and principals and secretaries in every office scramble to get coverages.
That's all.
All right. Um, adoption of healthy foods and beverages, 2223.
Okay. So in cabinet, I drew the short straw on this one because this is an annual set of motions that need to be made. Um, and it has to do with obviously participating in the, uh, healthy food and beverages, um, grants that, um, that help subsidize our school lunch program. And what these, so within the program, you obviously have to participate with the nutrition standards and all, everything that goes into that. What these motions get at are everything else that you might sell in a school, which means the vending machines, the, uh...
Student store.
Concession stand that you open on a Friday night football game, the school store, the fundraiser where we're going to sell, that you're doing that at proper times of the day that if you are doing those things and they don't fall under the nutrition standards, that they're not basically competing with the school lunch program. So they are wordy motions, but they have to be read. So as any well-prepared pair, any well-prepared teacher would do, I sought out volunteers before class to read the motions.
Which means he just assigned.
I mean, we've all been told to read.
So, yes. So Jen is going to start us off?
Actually, I...
Oh, okay.
My annual question of this.
I know.
Um, we're being asked to certify this. I, I'd just like to hear a couple of minutes just here that we comply and that, that is in fact the case.
Right. So principals know the rules of this. They work with their PTOs, certainly like Jeff where concession stands are open, they know the rules. It's basically like you can't sell during the school day. And so anybody who says, "Oh, we want to set up a booth and we're going to..." You can't start till 2:15 at the high school. You can't start, um, you know, it has to be after the school day. The vending machines could probably sell more snacks, but they have to actually use the healthy snacks. Like they, they can't, you know, you probably can't get any Cheetos in there or anything like that, like, um, so...
There's no bacon.
There's no bacon.
Oh, my gosh.
So, um, and there's only, like, in terms of student-available, um, vending machines, I think they're only at the high school. I, I think any other vending machines are available only to adults in the rest of the schools. So, um, it's really booster clubs, clubs at the high school that might be selling food, and PTOs that need to know the rules of engagement. So that would be how I...
And they all go through somebody who knows?
Well, and the principal knows.
Okay.
You know, I mean, in general, don't sell during the school day. Okay? So with that said, Jen is going to start us off with the first motion.
Move that pursuant to CGS Section 10-215F, the Simsbury Board of Education certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under its jurisdictions and not exempted from the Connecticut nutrition standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut nutrition standards during the period of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. Whew, that's a long sentence. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school store, vending machines, school cafeterias, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or by non-school organizations and groups.
Second.
Any discussion? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion one down. Who was voluntold?
Mr. Tindall was another volunteer.
Yes, I, I volunteered. Uh, I move that pursuant to Sections 10-215F of the Connecticut General Statutes, the Simsbury Board of Education hereby will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut nutrition standards provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on a weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. And three, the food items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is defined as an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, and interscholastic debates are events, but soccer prac, soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate team meetings are not. The school day is the period from midnight before, wait, yeah, the school, I'm sorry. The school day is the period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the food sales.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Simsbury Board of Education will allow the sale to students of beverages not listed in the Section 10-221Q of the Connecticut General Statutes, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. And three, the beverages are not sold from a vending machine or a school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. The school day is a period from midnight before 30 minutes before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the food sales.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right.
Thank you for indulging me.
And I, I have one question that's sort of not related, but reminded me. On the lunches, when do we decide or how, who decides? Will meals go back to pre-pandemic costs?
Yeah. So the federal, the federal government is not going to continue to sponsor free meals for all.
Okay.
So that has been determined. There is talk in the Connecticut Legislature right now of perhaps some funding in the surplus, expanding the offerings still in Connecticut. But as of right now, um, uh, nutrition services directors are being told, don't plan on sort of, all school lunches will be reimbursable, that it'll be back to selling school lunches except for kids who are free and reduced school lunch, right?
We'll maintain the structure now through the end of the year.
Through the end of this year, we maintain the structure. And then it, um, you will have to fill out an application next year probably for free and reduced school lunch. You should have been doing that anyway, but we noticed that our numbers certainly fell off once you didn't have an incentive or you had less incentive to fill out an application for free and reduced school lunch because it was free for everybody. So we expect our numbers that decreased to sort of increase again.
Have we seen an increase? Just curious. Like, have we seen an increase in kids participating in that?
Getting the free meal?
And getting lunch and getting free meals?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Bring your lunch and get lunch?
You can...
Double lunches?
Yes, there have been many lunches served.
Great.
Good?
Yeah.
All right. Sorry, do you want to move on too quickly? Um, acceptance of a gift from Terriffill School PTO.
We actually have four gifts this evening, and to start us off, just want to remind the board that any gift that comes before us that's in excess of $1,500 by your board policy requires your acceptance of that gift formally at a Board of Ed meeting. So there are four. The first, um, is a gift from the Terriffill School PTO. The gift is for $2,000, and this gift will be utilized to defray the cost of Camp Jewel this year, um, again, given on behalf of the Terriffill School PTO, so there is a motion for your consideration at the end of this exhibit.
Can I just ask, did we move Camp Jewel to 6th grade because of the pandemic?
Yes. So we made a shift so students can have that experience. And then we are thinking about moving Camp Jewel potentially during the school year for next year, but wanted to make sure that our current 6th graders had this experience.
Great. All right. Thank you. Um, can I get a motion, please?
I'll move that the proposed gift of $2,000 to Terriffill School by the Terriffill School Parent Teacher Organization be approved. School Parent Teacher Organization be approved.
I will second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you so very much.
Just curious, so fifth grade's not going this year? Just sixth.
Fifth grade is not going this year, but we will make sure that they also have this experience.
I see, now you're going to have two grades go in one year, just to catch up.
Yes.
That's a lot of PTO support.
Not this year.
Not this year, maybe next year. They said.
Get back on track.
All right. Gift from the SHS Hall of Fame.
Yes, so the second gift is a gift from Ms. Tracy Hagan Mallory to the Simsbury High School Hall of Fame. It's a donation of $5,000. The primary objective of those funds will be to support the Hall of Fame events. So that motion is at the end of this exhibit.
Okay, anyone?
I move that the proposed gift of funds from Tracy Hagan Mallory to fund SHS Hall of Fame events be accepted.
Second.
Any discussion?
My only discussion is that the Hall of Fame was a great event, the dinner was a great event, and if you want to watch it and watch some of the amazing speeches from these athletes who were great students and community members of town, go to SCS, Simsbury Community Media.
Media.
And they have the whole show, and it really is something to watch. Coaches and Tracy won an award and was really eloquent in her acceptance.
Great, hope to be there next year.
Yes, Jeff Penny will be discussing that in his report later on this evening.
Terrific. We have, did we vote?
No.
No. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None, motion carries, with our thanks to Tracy Hagan Mallory.
Great. The third gift is an approval of a gift to the Simsbury High School baseball boosters from David and Sherry Cordani. It's a gift of $5,000 to be used for outside activities for the baseball team as well as a new pitching machine. The motion is there for your consideration.
I have a question.
Yes.
On that, like it's, I guess I'm confused, and maybe this will come up later in our presentation, but why, we have to approve what boosters get?
We have to approve any gift to the school system. This gift will be utilized for some outside activities, but also for the new pitching machine.
Okay.
So it will be utilized by our school system.
So the pitching machine will be owned by Simsbury Public Schools?
Not the boosters.
Not Simsbury?
That's correct.
Baseball privately?
That's correct.
It's a gift from them to us.
Right. Which is why we're voting on it.
Okay.
Sure.
I'll move that the proposed gift of $5,000 from the Cordani family be approved.
Second.
Because it'll save my arm.
There's so generous. So generous.
Boy, rotator cuffs are 350 plus years old.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. With our thanks to the Cordani family.
Great, and the final gift for your consideration is a gift from all of the elementary parent teacher organizations to the District Curricular Enrichment Committee. And this committee provides different programming to our elementary school students. This year, all of the donations from the five parent teacher organizations totaled $16,677. So this year, there were two programs at the elementary level in the performing arts that are typically very well-received by our students, and we thank the PTOs for this gift offered here this evening. A motion at the end of the exhibit.
The Cultural Enrichment Committee does such a fabulous job district-wide, and it's such a great collaboration.
It really is, but I have another question, I'm sorry. But the, we do this every year, they've always done this for as long as I can remember. But I don't remember ever voting before.
No, we have.
They've never gotten.
We have, no.
Oh, you have?
We vote on it pretty much every year.
We actually pay the performers.
Yeah.
With the money.
Right, they pay to bring the groups to the schools.
They pick the groups, and the money comes in, and we pay them through our.
I don't remember.
Yeah. All right.
I'll do it. Move that the proposed gifts, I'm delaying, move that the proposed gift.
Sharon's making a motion, she started.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, sorry.
I move that the proposed gift fund from all the elementary school parent teacher organizations to provide cultural programming to elementary school students be accepted.
You want to second it, Jen?
I'll second it.
Sure. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. With our thanks.
Just, the generosity of the community.
I know.
We just accepted almost $29,000 worth of gifts, which is unbelievable.
I know.
Thank you to everybody.
We are very.
Yeah.
And they affect the outcome, every student, every student feels this, and it's really wonderful.
Yep. All right, so with that, Mr. Mattisick and his Terriffill report.
Great, so I will invite Principal Steve Mattisick and both social worker Erin Naspo as well as school psychologist Jan Hanlon up to the table when it's your time to do so. However, just wanted to frame out a couple of comments. So certainly throughout this budget season, the board has been extremely receptive of hearing about the enhanced need for mental health supports in our schools. We've shared with you some rationale around the increase in elementary social work positions, the increase in a secondary school psychologist position, as well as a special ed department restructure, which allows for our school social workers and school psychologists to be relieved of some of those really important, yet more administrative responsibilities of running planning and placement team meetings and working more directly with staff and students. So I know that there's been some questions around board members, the similarities and differences between social workers and school psychologists, so I thought it would be really helpful to hear from the best, and we have two of those individuals. Ms. Hanlon, I can't believe you laughed at that. I maintain that in this current position and in my former position, that we can put our school psychologists and social workers up against any other team in these United States, and they will still shine, they are that good. So, Mr. Mattisick, if you could kick us off, and then we have a brief presentation for you this evening.
Great.
I should sit down?
Yeah, sure.
And Simsbury Community Media would appreciate that.
You got it, guys. So thanks for having me. If we can, just cut.
Absolutely.
So today, Terriffill School, welcome up to our lovely school here. We're going to go over our support systems that we have in place here at Terriffill School. They are so vital to our, to our building and the culture and what our school social worker and school psychologists do, day in, day out, to really help, help our students. So we're going to go over just some support for our mental health needs. Erin and Jan are going to talk about the similarities and differences of our, what the school psychologist does and the social worker, and then at the end, they'll wrap up why they, why they love their jobs. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to, as you said, a wonderful staff.
Thank you. Just take the baby leg down there. Yes. Hi, everybody, I'm Jan Hanlon, I am the school psychologist at Terriffill School.
The mic will pick you up, you can social distance a little better.
Oh, okay, perfect. I need to choose, you're sitting close to the wall.
Someone else's voice.
Thanks for seconding my camera.
Are we scary?
I know, I was telling them I've made it 38 years in this career without ever having to do a Board of Ed meeting, I've got six weeks left. Here it are.
We wanted you to have a well-rounded experience.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And I'm Erin Naspo, I'm currently the social worker at both Central and Terriffill.
All right, so as educators, we love nothing more than a Venn diagram. It's true. So when Erin and I sat down to really start to parse out what we do, we realized the overlap is probably the most critical piece, so we wanted to start with that tonight and really talk about the areas that we both serve our population and the things that we do with our classroom teachers and so forth, so.
So we're going to talk a little bit about some of our tiers, which I will explain, we talk a lot about that here in the school. So you'll see that we have our Tier One console is the first thing we talk about, both for academics and our, any of our social emotional learning. We consider different tiers of intervention for how we support our students. So Tier One is always the support that we would be providing to all of our students. That being said, there's a lot of differentiation that happens because we know that both academically and how students present in terms of their social emotional needs varies. So even in the classroom, where we have the Tier One curriculum, there are nuances for what, how teachers need to present that information to their students so that they can access it. So a lot of what both of our jobs are, are working with teachers to look at whether it's a student who is struggling with some aspect of executive functioning, we may be talking about how that's going to affect them when the teacher is delivering their curriculum in math and in English, but we're also going to be talking about what skills are they teaching in terms of organization and just the ability to focus or the ability to control impulses that we would really see more in that social emotional learning. So that would happen all, and we would consider that our consultation, that is through Tier One, and certainly both of us do a lot of that.
In the Tier Two, we also provide counseling, and it might be on a short-term basis if a child is experiencing a disruption, a temporary disruption due to something that's happened. Both of us will pick up kids on an informal basis to provide a little bit more support to help them through those moments. And again, coming back from the pandemic, we know the kids have come back all over the place in terms of where they are and how comfortable they're feeling out in public again, so we've provided a lot of support along those lines as well. The Tier Two counseling is a little bit more intensive, we often will see kids for short-term, six to eight weeks, for a half hour or so, just based on what their needs are to help get them over whatever that barrier is, where that problem is at that moment. And then there's the 504, so 504 plans are gen ed, plans that are put into place for children who may have a medical need that's providing, that's causing a little bit of a barrier in the classroom. So what a 504 plan will do is provide accommodations where they can have, the most common ones that we hear about is they extend a time on a test, or they have access to a particular type of technology that allows them to access the curriculum. We also, again, provide some counseling if there's need through a 504 plan, and we will, we will both work on those things as well. And then the last, we'll let you go with.
So in terms of risk and threat assessments, we differentiate those between a student expressing intent or thoughts of hurting themselves, and then also potentially making some type of a threat to hurt somebody else. And when that happens, obviously, in any context where a student is making that type of a concerning statement, we are doing some assessment to determine what is going on for that student, what supports might need to be put in place, we're working with families around that, and really trying to assess whether there is any imminent danger to the student or anyone else in the school community. So that, you know, we both do these things, but we also do a lot of this collaboratively. So when Jan and I are in the building together, we are constantly working. So if we have, for instance, some type of a situation where a student has said something that indicates that they might be thinking of harming another student, the three of us would be meeting immediately and would all be partnering on that type of an assessment to determine what supports need to be put into place. So a lot of it we're doing, we might not, if a student has individual counseling with one of us, that might not overlap, but a lot of the other work is really overlapping, the same thing with some of our consultation.
All right, so the ways that our jobs are a little bit different. For a school psychologist, a lot of, back in the day when I started, it was referred to an educational psychologist. And so the focus of the work that I did in my undergraduate and graduate work was really on the educational part of learning and the psychology behind learning. So as that gets translated into the day-to-day world, a great big part of my job is participating in all levels of intervention when there's a student who's having difficulty either making the academic progress that they need to be, or as Erin had talked about earlier, executive functioning is getting in the way of their ability to be able to learn and make the progress that we want them to make, or if their behavioral emotional needs, all of those things, you know, they start to bubble up and the teachers will come to us. So the first level, they come to the student intervention team, and the school psychologist is a pretty active member in that, that team. It needs at least, in our building, it needs at least once a week, it's structured differently in other buildings, but that is a place where the teacher can come and ask for additional support, where they've used all of their knowledge, and they're still not getting the student to move along in the direction that they want them to. This is a group of professionals that allows them to really bounce ideas off of each other, to come up with new ideas, to do some brainstorming, but it's also a place for us to really specifically develop an intervention. And again, it can be in reading, math, writing, it can be in the behavioral and or social areas, we cover it all, but we start to really develop those interventions and to do some progress monitoring to see that the child is making progress in the specific areas that we want them to, our goal is to close that gap, so that all kids are reaching that achievement level. As we look at what happens next, there are times when kids still continue to struggle to make those educational gains, and so they might get referred to the special education team for an evaluation. So as a school psychologist, I help design what that evaluation would look like, I do a lot of collaboration with parents, have that first contact with them to explain their tour guide through special education, if you will. So we devise this assessment, and then we do the evaluation itself, write, do the interpretations, and then come back around to the planning and placement team meeting with the parents to help them understand what we've discovered about their child's learning profile, and then we take it further to say what the next step should be, and that might be that we're recommending an IEP, that's an individual educational plan where we really will get those academic supports to help the kids make the progress. If there's counseling that's required, or social skills development or executive functioning work that happens under an IEP, the school psychologist is the one who then carries that through. There's all paperwork that goes along with it, and the month by month, making sure that we've got the IEP met. So, and then the last little, the last little nugget is probably my favorite part of the job, is working with kids who are having behavioral challenges and getting to understand what's driving their behavior, understanding where they're coming from so that we can help them bridge that gap to be able to, they can do what they need to do in the classroom. And again, the goal is to get them to be happy, healthy students there with academic progress. So we write, develop, we write behavior plans, and we also work with kids who are in crisis. We are trained with behavior de-escalation and behavior management. And that's it.
That's it.
That's all you did?
You survived.
There's probably more, but that's, that's the big part.
So social work training is a little bit different than the psychologist training in that social work is such a broad field. So as a licensed clinical social worker, I can work in a school, I could work in a nursing home, I could have a private practice, there's a lot, work in a hospital setting, there's a lot that you can do under that umbrella of social work. So our training is pretty varied, there's a lot of in-depth clinical training to make sure that whatever setting you're in, you're able to provide the clinical support that's needed. And there's a huge piece of social work that is focused on diversity, that's focused on assessing needs, and really spending time connecting with families and your clients. So that's kind of the overall, and I mention that because you'll see that the list on my side of things is pretty varied, and so certainly there's the educational pieces that we'll do, but some of this looks pretty different. So it's not unusual that I'm having conversations with families about, you know, maybe somebody has lost a job, or they don't have what they need at home. And all of that is so relevant because if our students are not able, they, they might not have, we have students that are homeless, they, if they can't get those basic needs met, they can't come into school and then perform and learn and achieve what they need to achieve here. So a lot of my work is varied in terms of spending a lot of time talking to families. I oftentimes get phone calls from families that just aren't sure where to start, that they have concerns about their child for one reason or another, and I can be sort of their entry point into the school system to figure out, do they need support from us? Do they need support in the community? And if they did, how could I help link them with that? I do home visits, as do our other social workers, because sometimes, as welcoming as we try to make our schools, some of our parents don't have fond memories of their school experiences and find it really intimidating to come and have to talk about some pretty challenging things that they might be facing with their children. And so if I can go out to somebody's house and have that conversation more effectively in their home, if they're not able to get to us for whatever barriers, because they have young children or something else is happening in terms of their work schedule, if we can eliminate those barriers by going out to do a home visit, we're going to do that. We do a lot of, yes.
I mean, Erin, I mean, I'll tell, how do families find you? How do they know to go to you as the entry point? Is it through the website? Is it through materials that we give them?
That's a great, that's a great question. So I find a lot of times it's word of mouth, that families will say, have you thought about calling the school social worker? But we do have information that goes out always through our listserv community. But we do have information that goes out always through our listserv communication. So at the start of the year, we'll send out communications to families so that they will know if, that I'm a point person, if they have any needs throughout the school year. My name is sprinkled quite frequently in those communications. So as there are needs that might come up for field trips or for PTO sponsored events where there might be some cost associated with that, where somebody might need, which reminds me, somebody needs carnival tickets, I need to remember to send. All of those types of things, my name is repeatedly put out in those communications. And then a lot of times teachers, sometimes when a family might call a teacher and the teacher's realizing that what the family is asking about has nothing to do, or what's happening with the child has nothing to do with math, they might say, you know what, I'd like to reach out to Mrs. Nasbo and see if she could help you.
Great, great. Excellent, thanks.
Yeah.
Sometimes we just see that the kids, see behavior changes or see just the appearance, things of that nature that either we see it, teacher sees it, they, they go to these guys.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like the help is great, but want to make sure people know.
How to get it.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that is, and that piece of being visible is so important because it is, it's tricky to, if you don't know, it's very hard to ask for help as any of us know. And when you're struggling or you're in a crisis with your, your children and you're looking, you don't want to have to be jumping through hoops to figure out who to, who to talk to. So we try to, to make ourselves as visible as possible.
Great, thank you.
So, and you know, we do a lot around, we have a lot of programs to help with, you know, clothing, someone needs a winter coat, somebody needs, we partner with Gifts of Love. So some of our children that might be vulnerable for food needs bring home weekend backpacks that are filled with food. I do a lot of that outreach to connect families with those programs. And again, in the beginning of the year, but then throughout the year, we might have those conversations. Sometimes children refer me to their families because they'll come to me and they'll say, Mrs. Nasbo, I see some kids that have food and, and I think that could help my mom right now. And, you know, can we talk to my mom about that? Absolutely. So sometimes I get those referrals directly from our children too. So we do a lot around holidays, which can be a really challenging time for families. You know, just a lot of needs, particularly over the last couple of years. So we are constantly partnering with families to just assess what their, what their needs are and doing it in a way that's very appropriate for schools. So when we're looking at supporting a family for some holiday needs, we're looking at what do they need educationally and developmentally to be able to grow in, in their developmental stage and providing, so our, our youngest kids that might be struggling, some of their games and things might help them with their counting and with their reading, we're constantly giving books to, to children at the holidays. So we do a lot of that. The community referrals that I mentioned, sometimes it, a lot of families will call us thinking, you know, this is going on, could you help my child? But it's not always the best thing for us to be working with students, particularly on family issues during the school day. So imagine any of us taking a break and going and having a really emotional conversation and then trying to go in and learn some new material. That's really hard and our children don't necessarily even have the compartmentalizing skills that we've all developed over the years. So there are times where we don't want to ask our children to do that. And our parents are so important, particularly with our elementary age children, that school based counseling certainly has a place, but there are other times where families need to be more integrally involved. So in those instances, I would be working with families on making sure that they knew how to access services and where to do that. So a lot of conversations around that. Our families who live in Hartford face some unique challenges. One simple example that I give is that our families that live in Simsbury know when to send snow pants in because they drive by the school and they see that the playground is covered in snow and so they know, oh, I gotta remember to do that. Well, if you don't drive by the school, you, you might not know that. So there's just little things that are more challenging for our families. They're, they're not able to be in the school as often and make necessarily some of the connections. So our social work team does a lot of additional outreach for our families who live in Hartford and try to make sure that parents have that access to us and have that point person. So to your point, in terms of who would, how would they get connected with me? We do outreach to all of our families who are living in Hartford so that they know that you have a point person here at school. No question is too small of a question. Please reach out to us regularly. I put on there some mentor coordination, different buildings have different access to things. I've had two of our mentors sitting at the table, both Neil and Sue have been willing to come and meet with some of my students over at Central before, which is a great opportunity for some of our students who just really could benefit from having an adult in their life regularly. And so we coordinate that. Here at Terrifield School, we have some really cool programs. We have a partnership with Westminster School and they actually send some of their students come and partner with our children in a grit and grace club, which does some homework and then also some activities and fun partnerships. So we will do a lot of those types of programs within our buildings to try to look at, how do we reach more children? And so I can't meet with everybody, but I might be able to have, I mean, who'd be lucky to have a Sue or a Neil come and sit and have lunch with them once a week, we can just reach more children. So we're able to create those types of programs and then keep those running. And then we do a lot with attendance. So Steve and I meet regularly for attendance and we look at all of our data to try to see what's going on. Our nurse is huge in helping us understand why students might be out and making sure that there aren't underlying anxiety things happening or some type of stress that a family might be experiencing that's interfering with their child's ability to, to come to school. So there's a lot of outreach that would happen around attendance and that's another great way where we're actually able to get connected with families because that's just one of the signs that maybe a family is struggling. So it's a pretty varied range of things that we can be doing in any given day. I think that's about it.
So do you like your job? Think that was the last piece?
Yes, what's your favorite part of your job, Jan Hamlin? Besides working with me?
I have to say, it's been great having the social worker in the building because the needs are so varied and it's, you know, a lot used to fall on, to help with the outside, with the family piece, and it was just more than I could do in, in just the five days that I was here. But it is a great job. I have loved it. I can't imagine spending my life doing anything else. It's never boring. And any day that I come in that is perfectly planned, right down to the minute, you know it's not going to happen. Something else came up and it all gets thrown out the window. But it's been fabulous, so yeah, you like it?
I do like it. I am, I, they have not accepted, you know, my retirement yet. I, I'm a little upset you accepted Jan.
You've got some time yet, Mrs. Nasbo.
I'd say my favorite part of the job is the early intervention aspects and just being able to have the opportunity to work with young children and identify what supports they need, what skills they need to start developing and to get them on the right track for kind of that lifelong process of being a learner. And it's a privilege, I think, to be able to share in that journey with families. Parenting, I say to all the parents I work with, as a parent, it is the most humbling thing I've ever done in my life. And to be able to walk through with another family, their journey at a time where they may be feeling really vulnerable is just really meaningful to me. So I think that's my, my favorite, my favorite parts.
It's pretty incredible. I've seen it firsthand how the building of relationships is crucial to these roles and the building of trust. And what our team does, I think exceptionally well, is to make sure that the kids are at the center of any discussion and any decisions that they're making. So it's tough work, but it's rewarding work and it's for our kids and it's pretty amazing. So, you know, as Erin had shared at the very beginning, she's currently split between Terrifield and Central. And just want to remind the board that of your support of two additional elementary social workers, this will denote one specific social worker at each elementary level, which will be an incredible addition of support. Because when a student has an issue in the moment, it may not always be at the school that you're in, in that moment. So we've certainly appreciated your support as a board for these mental health supports for our students.
And imagine you, you support each other, it seems wonderfully, and we've heard that. But I imagine the teachers really, really appreciate being able to have you behind them when they see something coming up because they're the first line of defense and they see things and they can be able to find help for someone who might need it quickly.
Absolutely. Yep, both in the moment and then also sometimes navigating really tricky situations with families and, and having that support and to be able to have those conversations, I do think our, our teachers are very appreciative.
And then they came back to the teaching, which is, you know, yeah, that's great.
Right. Because we, we hear so many presentations that involve like tier one, tier two, multiple tiers of intervention, but in your position, you can be going right to the highest risk threat assessment or never leave tier one, depending on who you're dealing with. So I think you guys have a challenging job at best and it seems like you both really love it, which makes me feel so much better that you're in the building with our kids.
Yeah, I was going to say, thank you, thank you, thank you, but Ms. Hamlin, we're going to miss you.
Yes.
Yes, we are.
We're really going to miss you.
Thank you, Jan. And thank you, Erin and Steve.
Yes, thank you for showing us such a great presentation. We appreciate it. Yeah, yeah, great to hear. All right, so Mr. Penny, hot seat for you.
Come on up. So our second report of the evening is from the Department of Athletics and Student Activities. So Mr. Penny is going to talk about, would you like the clicker? Mr. Penny is going to talk about the many offerings that we have for our students and how they exemplify passion, pride, and personal growth at Simsbury High School. In addition, he's also going to talk about some of the budgets relative to this department and answer any questions that you might have along the way. Jeff.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me tonight. My goal with tonight is to really kind of draw a through line from the board district goals all the way down to how we're doing this year and how do we measure that on an annual basis? I want to give some data points for how I think we can track this over time and really create the beginning of a conversation so we know how well we're doing this and engaging students after school. My favorite thing about my job, and I thought this was a great way to, to transition, is about creating opportunities for, for kids outside of the classroom. So much of the experience that our kids get is not just what happens in the classroom. It's tremendous. I support academics first and foremost always, but so much of that high school experience comes in the hours and the days outside of that time. So I want to make sure I take some time tonight and talk about the opportunities we create so kids can find their passion outside of the classroom, how we help them develop pride and a work ethic and resilience in what they do, which has certainly helped them these last few years and, and what we track for growth over time. So starting with this, I know many of my colleagues come in front of you and you've seen the five year goals. I wanted to start with, how do we kind of narrow that down and what are the focus areas through athletics and student activities? And really it comes down to what do we do for students? What do we do for staff? And how do we operate the entire department? And really, it allows us to, to focus on making sure we're starting at the same point as the district level and really hitting those points and ensuring success for every student, providing a challenging and supportive learning environment, creating a compassionate, my favorite, connected school culture as much as we can and prioritizing professional growth and teamwork for our staff. How do we measure it is really the, the beginning question because this is what matters. It's great if we have all these offerings, but how do we track whether or not they're meeting the needs of kids, we're engaging kids and we're doing this over time? And really, it breaks down into these three categories. What is it that we're offering? How many clubs and activities? How many sports? Are we measuring participation? We are, and I'll share those numbers with you this evening. How many of our students are we actually engaging? What's the percentage of our population and what does that look like over time? And then what are we actually accomplishing? The best thing about sports is a lot of times there's wins and losses. You can show a record for how well we're doing competitive compared to other schools in the area. And that's really been a joy to see teams improve over my six years in this role. And I've really enjoyed that piece of it and sharing that number with coaches at our end of the year meeting and go, here's our, here's our percentage for the year. Here's how many students we engaged. Here's what our win percentage was. Here's some of our highlights and I'm going to take the time to share some of that with you this evening. We have 38 varsity sports at Simsbury High School. When I was hired, I was told we're the second largest athletic department in New England. I still can't find the first. If somebody knows, please tell them. I get asked and I cannot answer that question. I can't find another school in New England that has 38 varsity sports. I really can't. And, and it's just a tremendous joy to get to work with that quantity and quality of coaches and student athletes and families. We have 86 teams and it breaks down by fall, winter, and spring. This is by far our busiest season. We have events going seven days a week right now, right through the end of school and beyond. New England's track usually don't end until the third week of June. So we're busy right up until then. But it's not just athletics. We also have to make sure that we're engaging all of our students. And we do that through our clubs and activities. We currently have 65 clubs and activities running at Simsbury High School. We added eight new ones this year. And this is one of the things I want to make sure that I highlight tonight. Students every single year come in with different interests. How do we engage those students? How do we make sure what we're offering is in their best interest? We have to listen to them and we have to engage them in a way that gives them a voice. Say, here's what we'd like to do. These are some examples of the clubs that started this year. And there's some clubs that students are no longer interested in. How they do that is coming part of freshman orientation. They come in, we have an activities fair. We take the parents and we put them in the auditorium and they get to listen to a curriculum discussion about what they can expect from the classroom at Simsbury High School. But we take the kids and we bring them across the hall. Last year, we had it out in the back parking lot under the tents so that we can still make sure we engage those freshmen as, as best we can. And there are representatives from every club, most of the sports, and they get a chance to, to meet one-on-one with their peers and really to try to engage the incoming freshmen to say, you might be interested in this, you might be interested in this. And the goal is to get them active outside the classroom. Beyond that, I meet with every freshman class and I tell them, my one piece of advice for you is this, get involved at Simsbury High School. Your experience here will be tremendously different if you become a part of the school community. So I ask that you try something. And if you don't like it, it's okay. If we don't have what you want, come talk to me and I'll help you start it. And I have kids who do that. They come into my office, they say, hey, can we talk about something? Of course, come on in. What would you like to talk about? I'd like to start a club and I'd like to do this. Okay, let's have an interest meeting and see if other kids are interested and want to do the same thing. We have an interest meeting. I make sure there's no other clubs that have that same goal first. Then we have an interest meeting. Then I go looking for a faculty advisor and we get the club up and running. This spring, we have a group of students that just restarted dodgeball, which they absolutely love. Thank you. It's Wednesday afternoons.
I gotta loosen up my left arm again.
It's true, they're practicing on Wednesday.
But again, it's about engaging all of our students as best we can. And that goes back to the, to the board event goal. And that truly is the joy in this department because we want to give kids what they're looking for and make them a larger part of our community. So at the end of the day, how are we doing in our participation numbers? I want to go back and talk about 2018, 19, because that was our last real full year before COVID. We didn't have a spring season and we didn't have football and wrestling, which are two of our largest sports. In 2018, 19, this is just athletics, 60% of the students at Simsbury High School participated in athletics. This year in 21, 22, 61% of our students have engaged in athletics. Now, the population's declined a little bit, so our total numbers are down. If you look at, well, we used to have a freshman boys lacrosse team and we don't this year. What's the difference? Our overall enrollment is down, but our, our participation numbers are higher than they've been. And that's a tremendous credit to our coaches, our families, our kids, and the resilience that they have and want to be a part of this work because they're coming back and we already, just coming out of COVID still and having these conversations, we're, we're back to what I would consider full strength from before. And that's just a tremendous accomplishment, I think, by the school and the community to be able to make sure our kids are still engaged in athletics the way that they were before. When we talk about.
So Jeff, just to go back to that, see if I'm, so in 18, 19, for instance, 845 unique kids played 1,519 seasons of sports.
Yes. Multi-sport athletes. That's how we get from 845 to 1,519.
In, sort of in that same vein, since we're on this slide, what's your continuity of participation? How many kids remain with the sport or switch between sports? Do you know that?
It's a good question. No, it's not something that I tracked over time, but it's certainly something that we can look at from freshman to senior year. We have the information, it's just not something that I'm like.
Okay.
When we look at clubs, in 2018, 19, we had 64 different clubs and activities with a total 44% of individual students who participated in those clubs and activities. This year, the number is not complete yet because right now we've only tracked honor societies and the musical. We will at the end of the year get the rest of the information from our clubs and activities, but we're already at 42% of the existing high school population participating in clubs and activities. When you put all of the individual students together. When you put all of the individual students together, to Neil's question, in 2018-19, 81% of Simsbury High School students were at clubs, activities, or athletics. That's the lives that we get to touch every day, which is tremendous. And I will share that number when we collect it at the end of this year. But how are we actually doing compared to other schools? What are we accomplishing as teams? What are we accomplishing as student athletes? We had three state championship runner-up teams this year. Girls volleyball, for the first time in 49 years, made it to the state finals, came in second. Girls soccer, first time since, I believe, 2014. And wrestling was the state runner-up. Since the last season, they came in second. They came in second again this year. So they're obviously doing very well. And boys cross country did not get nearly as much press. They finished third in the state as well. So our teams on a whole are doing extremely well. And then you get to head-to-head competitions, 68% win percentage in the fall, 67% win percentage in the winter. Comparatively, that's the very first data point that I shared with coaches when I came in and got hired. I took all of the head-to-head competitions only from the year before. We were at 52% at that time, six years ago. We're now up close to almost 70%. We had 10 CIAC tournament game victories so far this year, not including the spring. Obviously, we're not there yet. And that, for me, is a tremendous step forward. We joke and talk about the fact that we want to win state titles and we can't seem to get past that first round in state tournament games. And we've had 10 CIAC victories so far this year. So that is, again, another step forward and we're winning competitively in the higher-level competitions at the state level, across the state, in multiple sports. And it's just a tremendous opportunity for our kids to persevere and see success. And it's challenging because they have to learn when they get there. There's only one champion in the state in every sport. But our kids are really competing to try to beat that team, and I think that's a tremendous credit to them and the coaches. Girls basketball made it to the semifinals for the first time in school history as well. So my favorite thing about this particular slide, it's not one team that's getting better, it's all the teams that are moving forward and getting better. And that's the expectation, and that's what we hope to continue and push into some of our other programs. Individual student athletes are achieving at that same above-the-bar level that we've had in the past. We had Girls Ice Hockey Player of the Year last year, Mackenzie Chapman. This year is Caitlin O'Brien, who's our hockey goalie down here. We had a Walter Camp All-State Football Team Award winner this year, Zach Trudy. And I didn't realize this when the group came in to give him the award. His name is actually gonna be in the National High School Football Hall of Fame in Atlanta as part of the State of Connecticut team. And I didn't realize that. I mean, that's a tremendous honor. And the best part about that is the award, it's not just how he is on the field, it's his academics and it's his contributions to the community outside of school that are also taken into account in him winning that award this year. In 2021, we have 45 all-conference athletes throughout the entire year. Just in the fall and winter this year, we've had 57 so far, raising the bar. All-state, we had 20 in 2021. So far, just in the fall and winter this year, we have 18. I expect that number to be much higher than that, given how well our track team is doing.
And it's hard to do the 2021 numbers because those, I mean, they're not really apples to apples, unfortunately.
State-class champions, Olivia Burney, 1,000-meter, Victoria Francis in the 300-meter, and Tim Watson in the high jump. All-New England, we had two this year, Tim Watson, Olivia Burney. And then we had two All-Americans in Tim Watson and John Myrona. It's just amazing to see how successful our kids are being, even on the national stage. This is what we want for all of our kids. My favorite day of the year, kids keep doing this after they leave us, right? The greatest legacy you can give someone is that they want to keep doing what you taught them once they move on. And this coming Friday, April 29th, at 8:00 AM at Simsbury High School, you're all invited, signing day in the gold gym. And I have some names to add to this. So I have up there, just to highlight some of our Division One signings this year. Charlotte Durway at Brown will be rowing. Tim Watson, Penn State, track and field. Olivia Burney at Yale, cross-country and track, and Evan Wallace at Maine, playing football. Since I created this presentation and gone over it, we've collected everybody that wants to participate in this event. We have six more Division One athletes this year. It's not pictured. Megan Donegan in swimming in Central Connecticut, Jack Garrity in rugby at Fairfield, Leila Gary, track and field at Sacred Heart, Sidney Marcy, crew Sacred Heart, Kyle Patterson, track and field at the University of Rhode Island, and just today, Zach Johns, wrestling for Virginia Tech. 10 athletes, 25 total signings that we're prepared for right now on Friday, 10 of them are Division One. And it's just a lot of fun. It's a great event. How is our staff doing in supporting our student athletes? Girls soccer coach, class finalist, Steve Jarvis, boys soccer coach, CCC, we have 32 schools in our conference, by the way. He was the Boys Soccer Coach of the Year. Greg Stillman, who I know you got to see a couple of weeks ago, had his 200th win. And I didn't even think to bring it up with me. I left it on the floor over there. The Michael's Cup is the only award that an athletic department can win as an athletic department. And it used to mean something different years ago where it was given to the most outstanding athletic department. In the last several years, it's been focused more on sportsmanship. And in every year, I submit, what have we done particularly with students directly to teach sportsmanship? And we have a group called the Student Athlete Leadership Team. And every year, I intentionally meet with this group of juniors to start to frame and set goals for them as seniors. What do you want your senior year to look like? How do you want to impact the culture at Simsbury High School? And every year, they set goals and we work towards them. A couple of years ago, this group was wonderful and supported us not charging students and parents who pay to play to come to games anymore. And that came out of that salt group. We wanted to encourage more participation and support from one another at those games. And this year, they wanted to have better theme days. We want to make coming to the games fun again. We want to make it an event. And if you've seen any of the pictures on social media, they've done heart hat days, they've done cowboy days.
Very creative.
Country club days, they've done ski and sun. They really are trying to take on the mantle of, we want everybody there and we want it to be a good time. We want to support each other in a positive way, and that comes out of that group, and that's why we've won this. We were one of four schools in the state of Connecticut to win that award the last four years. And we got to see the National Unified Banner presentation earlier tonight, which is obviously a tremendous highlight for us.
And just want to recognize Coach Bulmer and Coach Spector, who were both here this evening in their tremendous work to.
We should have mentioned them earlier.
Yes, I was thinking about it. We got into the picture and then I learned. But just want to publicly recognize both of those coaches for really increasing the expectation for all of our unified athletes.
And starting some new offerings for them. We run two unified sports a season. And pre-COVID, we even had started a summer softball program. So Mr. Spector and Ms. Bulmer are really pushing the envelope to make sure that kids are included and have an opportunity to participate.
And I forgot about cornhole. So excited about that.
I need lessons.
My arm.
So one of the things that I wanted to make sure we talked about is, how do we train our coaches? Where do they come from? It is getting more challenging to find quality coaches, but this is the basic overview. They have to be certified, like teachers have to be certified in the classroom. Coaches have to be certified to work with children. If you are a teacher, you receive the prerequisite form of education that allows the CIAC to recognize, we think you should be working with children. And then you have to take the concussion course and first aid and CPR on an annual basis. If not, you have to take a 45 clock hour course that we don't reimburse coaches for. Our volunteers also have to fall under this exact same criteria. There's no differentiation in the education of a volunteer versus a paid coach. They have to meet the same standard in order to work with kids. And that is not an inexpensive course. It's something they pay for out of pocket. So we really want to make sure that when they come, they're intended to be there for a long period of time, and that can be a challenge for some as well. Annual training, I teach them, I'm one of the certified trainers for the state of Connecticut, to teach CEUs to our coaches because they still need continuing education units, whereas teachers no longer have to do that. They have professional development built in. Coaches are still required to take 15 credits every five years. I teach at least one or two courses a year so that they can get it in-house because of the number of coaches that we have.
Is this coaches and assistant coaches? So everyone on the coaching staff?
Every coach and every volunteer is required to do the same. Every coach, assistant coach, every volunteer, if you're on our coaching staff, you're required to meet these standards.
Who's a volunteer? I don't know who the volunteer is. Like, what's the example? Who's not in a coach or assistant coach? What is that volunteer doing? Who is that?
They're usually filling a very similar role to an assistant coach.
But they're not getting paid.
Correct, not by the Board of Education.
If they're a volunteer. Oh, they are getting paid.
Not by the Board of Education.
So they're not paid by the Board of Education and the required course is not paid for?
Correct.
So they're out of pocket doing this?
Yes, it's about $500.
And how often do you take that class?
You have to take that class once and then the CEUs allow you to maintain your certification over time.
Do we pay for the CEUs?
We do if they're our coaches, yes. That's one of the reasons why I offer them. If you take them in conference, then you can get them for free. If you don't take them in conference, and when I offer them or any of the colleagues in our 32 schools, you have to pay for them because you take them online or you have to go to CIAC to take them.
And how much do we pay volunteers?
So there are some who are true volunteers.
I was gonna say.
So.
Volunteers wouldn't be paid.
Yes, it's a different definition.
Yeah, and then on larger staffs like football, there is some booster club money that supports stipends for people putting a lot of hours in. It's not equivalent to a stipended assistant coach of the Board of Education, but it's sort of an honorarium to recognize that they've put a lot of hours into film work and being out there. They do go through all, so background checks, you had to have your COVID tests, everything that, if you were, like everything from a standpoint of being an employee that for licensing has to happen, HR still does with those people.
So the bigger the booster club, the more ability you have to pay a volunteer?
The better the fundraising efforts, yes.
Are there volunteers besides in football?
Yes. We have, so we have 23. The second-best example I can give is for years up until, I believe, last year, crew had, they split a stipend. The Board of Education paid essentially one novice crew coach and the booster club paid a second novice crew coach so that the boys had one and the girls had one. And essentially, we split the cost. And that we corrected, I believe, a couple of years ago.
Corrected by how?
Full salaries for both coaches.
So how do we decide which sports we support that way and which ones we don't?
It's, I mean, it's sort of a review of participation, how large the team is. One of the things that happened with football as Coach Masters took over the program is our football team went from the size of, I mean, football, we're the only school where football started to get bigger. Most high schools, as sort of more words about concussions and things, high school football programs shrank. Ours went from, we had about 45 kids on the roster to 100. And there started to be a need for safety to have more adults around. And that, so that would be an example of where the larger the team, they start looking for qualified people who are able to help and willing to help. But most small teams have, don't have volunteers. So I would say it's more typical that a small team does not.
So like a basketball or a softball, those are smaller teams, they don't?
There's been a longtime volunteer for Greg Stillman, true volunteer, just loves it, loves working with the kids, volunteer.
We have a volunteer female tennis coach. There's a volunteer female golf assistant coach. So really, we have not denied a booster club really the opportunity or a coaching staff that we felt there was a need to add a coach. We haven't said, no, you're not allowed to have more staff. We've worked with them and encouraged true volunteers and continue ongoing conversations about if that's a long-term need, then we need to make sure that we do it the right way and get it into the human resource.
All the way to a medical professional in the community who isn't gonna take any money from us but actually pole vaulted back in the day and comes and works with pole vaulters. I mean, it's pretty remarkable when we talk about like the generosity of the committee of the community, sometimes it's just time, like, I want to come do this.
But of all those, like, how many sports do we have? Did you say that first slide?
There's 39 different sports and 86 teams.
So at 86 teams, do we have 86 coaches?
Do we have 86 coaches? Yes. So the numbers, we have 101 paid positions and we have currently 23 volunteers. There's 124 coaches on staff at Simsbury High School.
And of those volunteers, how many of them are paid?
I do not know that number off the top.
We can get that information for you. We can figure that out, get that to you.
So the 101 paid are the assistant coaches and coaches?
Correct.
And freshman, so there are, there are four kinds of coaches. Varsity coaches, JV coaches, freshman coaches, and assistant coaches.
So are all varsity, JV, and freshman paid?
Yes, all of those people are paid. And then depending on team size, it depend, so like, let's take a very typical team, men, not men's, boys and girls soccer. There's probably between each level, there's 22, 24 kids on a team. So the program has 72 kids. We allocate a varsity coach, a JV coach, a freshman coach, and then there's one assistant coach. And that could look like it's pretty much the varsity assistant, but sometimes that head coach will use that person to go between teams. So I would say a typical program of some size, like, you know, so take your lacrosse's, take your soccer's. They have four coaches, four paid coaches.
Okay, so like, something like track, which has, I think, at one point, it's had like 125 kids.
Six paid coaches. Six paid coaches.
It's also structured by the way the sport is generally structured. So with track, you do it by event. So you have a sprint coach, you have a jumping coach, a pole vault coach, a distance coach, and a middle-distance coach. So part of it is actually the athletics themselves. What is the normal structure for that sport?
So are all of them considered like head coaches of their areas?
No.
No?
No, there's a head coach that oversees the program and then assistant coaches by each individual.
So you have some typical agreed-upon structure that Neil just shared. And then depending upon the sport, you might have some unique positions or idiosyncrasies that add to that coaching staff.
And what are our biggest sports?
Track's a great example.
So we've got track, football.
Football.
Rugby?
Boys rugby was, the numbers are down quite a bit this year, but they're still over 40. There's quite a few that are in the 40 to 50 range every single year, crew, lacrosse, rugby for the boys. Girls are little smaller girls that are in low 30s.
I went on that girls tennis trip. That's a big team too.
I was on that field trip. That's a big team.
They're doing really well. They have, they'll be in 40 or 41.
There's a lot of wrestlers right now.
There's a lot of wrestlers.
There are always a lot of wrestlers. I went to the Hall of Fame dinner. There are a lot of wrestlers. It is a well-supported sport in this town.
Golf is pretty good this year. Girls golf has 18. Last year, they had nine. So a new coach last year who's now in year two, he recruited and they doubled the size of their team.
That's awesome. That's great.
There's quite a few.
That's great. I just, I was just gonna say, I just have some concerns kind of about we're asking volunteers to spend $500 out of their pocket to get the training if they're not a teacher. How many non-teachers do we have? Do we know that?
I can look, but there's quite a few.
So I just feel like we're asking people not only to give time, but give out of their pocketbook and.
Shh, we're doing the budget and if they love it, they should love it. We're very happy that they're doing it.
It just feels like we're asking a lot of our volunteers.
We always do.
Yeah, but I would also look at it and say, like, if I was a volunteer, if it's something that I'm really committed and I would love it and I'm passionate about it, and I'm giving service, it's service.
It's service.
That's what it really is. And I want to be with the kids, then what is it?
It's strange to me that we have a certified coach out there, right? Just like an equipment would be a certified teacher, yet anybody can come into the school building and do background checks and we don't ask them to do any criteria, but yet I could go in and volunteer in my kid's classroom or go on a field trip or anything and there's no certification, just a background check. But yet, this is an assistant coach who's not really, he's the assistant to somebody else or.
Yeah, no, while the head coach still has to come present to the athletic department about.
The head does, but why does the assistant or a volunteer also have to do the 45 clock hour courses?
Those are CIAC rules.
Department, State Department of Education.
We would be okay with that because we want to make sure that they, they know what they're doing, right?
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't. My concern, my personal experience is just, like, we have refused to allow parents sometimes to come in and volunteer and help because they haven't gotten that 45 hours, which if you have a passionate person who wants to help, they can't help. And so I think we could get more help if we were allowing them to help.
See, and I would think that for that part, I mean, isn't it, we have background checks that we have to do for the parents, right? So that's a given. No one should get past that, but this, why would we have to do the certification? If I want to come in and volunteer for third and fourth graders, I gotta do my background, but I gotta do other certification too?
But I think the certification gives a standard, creates a standard, because some people might not be able. people might not be able to.
Well, the coaching I'm understanding, but I'm saying in the classroom.
Oh, no, I think we're talking volunteering in sports.
Yes, in the sports.
Okay, 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 all right. My bad, I'm sorry.
I get your confusion.
Yeah, I understand, yeah, we're still at sports.
So transitioning to just kind of some of the, the opportunities that presented themselves this year, and I just want to hit a couple of the highlights. A lot of schools were not able to reschedule all their games. We rescheduled all our games. We're not, with the exception of some J D, all of our varsity games issued their fin. We were able to finish every season that we played. There were quite a few schools that were not, and we were able to have fans in a safe manner. We had raised the bar on making sure we were doing COVID right and safely. Our kids were still able to play. We were able to have fans, we were able to get parents into the facilities, and we gave the closest experience we could during COVID to the families to make sure we tried to keep them engaged and give them the best possible chance to be successful. Transportation throughout the country was an issue, that was no different for us. We had to go outside and use other companies to run our buses, and it was very different, and it was challenging at times, and they did not operate the way that our beloved Salters normally does. So it was a challenge for us to get kids to and sometimes home from games even when we got them there. So that led to some interesting conversations. Keeping and re-engaging students, I showed you the data on that. The Hall of Fame induction, I just want to talk about very briefly, and thank you to Tara who was able to come. I want to make sure that everybody here is invited. The conversation was wonderful that I had with a couple of people at that dinner, and it was, we need to get more of the community involved. We need to get the Board of Finance there, we need to get some of the other, the Board of Selectment in that room, because the passion and the success that just permeates the group is unparalleled. It's absolutely tremendous, it's a wonderful evening, it is as fun and carefree as it can be, and everybody there is so thrilled to be there. We honestly have people come from across the country to be at that event, and it's just a wonderful night. And I just want to make sure that we get invitations out to a lot more people next year and get everybody there so you have a chance.
Especially us.
Yes.
Especially us. And Tara, how did you know?
I had a friend who was getting an award and called me and asked me if I'd be there. And I said, hmm, and I said, yes, I will definitely be there. And then I called Jeff, and I said, Jeff.
So we recognize there's an opportunity for growth there, and Mr. Penny and I have already talked about ways in which we can make sure that we are extending the invitation and especially to our Board of Ed.
I'm sorry, it was, it was fluid, it was, it was a COVID cancellation because it was originally scheduled right at the early part of January and the worst of the winter surge. So it, we, it sort of moved.
It started two years ago.
Yeah.
This is the same class from two years ago that we finally were able to induct, but that's no excuse.
But, well, and I've been at this for a long time, I've been going to them, I've been lucky enough to go to them because I've had known people who have gotten the award, which is wonderful, but.
Your advantage of growing up here.
Yes, and, and it is something that I've talked to Jeff about too a lot because the whole community should be coming to that, you know what I mean? And I think it would just benefit you and the, and our whole, it's really a great experience.
Especially as we try to, you know, make that Hall of Fame a big, a more robust exhibit at the high school too.
Anytime you can celebrate anything these days, I mean, let's do it and let's enjoy it, and, and it was, it's a very professional event and it's very lovely, and we've got Jay Reynolds who is a volunteer, Sims Re, who's a professional, and he does the emceeing, which I think always brings a nice, nice element to it. It's a nice event, and we should all, I'll make sure we invite as much of the community as we can.
There you go.
I want to make sure I said thank you. We're always trying to improve the facilities, we're always looking at the facilities. There are a lot of things on the capital plan a couple of years ago, and we're having those conversations about where are those projects and how can we find creative ways to fund them with support from the community as well as through the, through the town. But the new Blue Gym floor, that was a project this past summer, that floor was replaced. I just want to make sure people are aware of that. And the turf repair on Holden Field after the flooding this summer, that was a major project that was undertaken this year. Genuinely hard to tell the difference right now unless you really know where to look. It, the company that came in and fixed that did a tremendous job, and it was just with the support of, of the town and the community and people filing a lot of paperwork, we got through that, and we're going to get our teams back on that, so I wanted to make sure that we talked about that this year.
When will we need that turf done again? Like, how many years do we have that?
Don't we get 10 years out of a turf field?
Average lifespan is 10 to 12, but we do something called an impact test, which tells you kind of how much real bounce the, the field has left. I don't know where we're at, I know this field was installed in 2016, so it is something that we should probably talk about getting at some point in the, in the future on the five-year plan.
And before you move on, where are we with the bleachers since we have you?
I was getting ready to say, I wrote a note to Tara, where are we with the bleachers?
The bleachers, once they got approved, we, going through zoning, we had a couple of delays. Once they were approved, what happened was the timeline for delivery of materials would have been September, so we decided to wait until after the fall season and take advantage of that winter like we originally intended to. So we, I have a meeting Thursday morning with the electrician, the intention is to demolish the existing bleachers after next fall, and that way they can work and do the demo while it's cold, and then once they can break ground and install the new footing, they'll be able to build the new bleachers. So next school year, we should be working on the new home site bleachers and the new press budgets.
Are we going to be able to do it within the same budget that we have?
That is a question that I do not have the ability to answer.
As we all look at Amy.
Amy, poor Amy, she's like, I don't know.
Project manager. I don't know, but we can follow up with Jason to see where he is as far as bits and stuff.
So are you, so is the expectation the bleachers would be up before the end of school, like spring?
We have not been given a definitive end date yet.
I didn't know how long the install would, is supposed to be.
I do not have an answer to that either. I believe it was supposed to be done by the end of summer, so the following fall, so we would essentially be without them for one spring. That's why we're going to try to take advantage of the winter and the summer because that gives us a larger window.
So what year, we told them, 23?
Next, next school year, so 20, demolition will begin 2022.
Fall of 2022 demo, continue to work through spring of 2023, looking forward to actually working with those bleachers, cutting the ribbon, thank you, the fall of 2023.
Yes.
So I'm guessing we're not getting any complaints about all the issues that we were having that we had to take, right?
I don't think anybody's really complained a lot because they know it's on the horizon.
Right.
We've done what we can.
Will we still be able to use the turf on the spring of 23?
Yes.
You have to bring a ladder to sit on.
Kind of circling back to the passion, pride, and personal growth, going to those three buckets, student, staff, and operations. The, the top row is really some of the things that we haven't touched on yet that were focuses for this year, and then the bottom is focuses for next year. These are kind of the individual work that I do in the categories. The sports management internship is a, is an avenue to Capstone for some of our students who may not have another venue where they want to do it. If they're passionate about athletics, we certainly want to support that and give them an opportunity through the athletic office for Capstone. The student-athlete leadership team, I talked a little bit about, that's our upcoming leadership in our junior class, identified by the coaches on all the sports team. There's a C I A C banquet that's held every year that we attended virtually this year. We had 26 student athletes in the room from the junior class. They all set goals while we were sitting there for themselves as leaders, as well as what they'd like to see their senior year be, and I'll continue to work with that group next year. The Trojan Wall is our student body representative group, and their goal for this year was specifically, let's make coming to games fun again, and they did the dress-ups and the themes, and we're going to work on some goals for them for next year as well. Obviously adapting to meet the COVID guidelines so we could have those things take place, refining the club offerings as an annual, continue to meet the needs of the kids that we have in front of us, and then supporting Special Olympics, the Nationals. For the staff, I, I wanted to emphasize, we need to get to the next level and you can start winning, especially in the postseason. So I told them, focus on one thing. Every sport was told, your goal for this year is to intentionally teach culture. We lost some of that connectedness in the last couple of years. So I said, I want to know, what is your one thing you're focused on teaching this year? And how are you going to go about teaching it? Because it's not good enough to just say, we're going to teach commitment, and not have a plan. I wanted to see, what's your plan? How are you going to teach commitment if that's your?
So are they filing a plan with you?
Yes.
Okay.
And the Coaches Council is an opportunity to get more feedback from that group, and we're trying to figure out the right time to meet, whether it's four times a year or monthly, we're working through that right now, but that's a group of coaches in a room really talking about from their level, what do we need to do to grow our program so that we're getting feedback from the students, from the coaches, and that we're all on the same page as far as what direction we're moving forward in order to give kids that opportunity. And then operations continue to go on, we talked about those. Next year, focus a little bit more on leadership at the senior level. The coaches would love to see a leadership course brought in for all grades nine through 12. We have to work as a group on developing what that leadership program looks like to give kids that opportunity, and it's going to be open to everybody in the school, you don't even have to be a student athlete, but we want to make sure we're providing that opportunity, and we think that this department is a good way to do that. Making sure we're getting the right feedback from students is a focus for next year. We've tried electronic, we've tried hard copy, now we're looking at the questions. Are we asking the right questions? To make sure we're getting the right feedback to impact who's coaching, what they're coaching, how they're doing, and giving kids the best opportunities. And refining culture-building events. Kids don't all necessarily want to do the same thing anymore. It's not, we're going to do this because we've done this for 20 years, we're starting to ask kids, what do you want to do? We talked about, do we want to do a spring pep rally this year? And the kids were like, not really. What would you like to do instead? And I know we're working with S P T C to put on a, a, sort of a high school version of a field day in, in May. So we're asking the kids, what do you want? Because we want to engage them at their level. Offseason communications, increased opportunities for kids, refining the coaching evaluation, and the college recruiting process, we don't really teach coaches how to help families. A lot of the time, it's, it's the parents making appointments with me, and I sit down with them, we kind of talk through the process. We do have an N C A A night where I work with the counseling office to educate people on what that process looks like, but I want to make sure coaches have the right tools, and there's some tools out there that we're going to look at and say, is there something that we can offer to our community for free that would help them with this process? Because we want to make sure families have those tools as well. We want that number and that signing day to continue to grow. And then continuing to talk about facility improvements is, is a priority because it's something that understandably we prioritize, schools being put into a better position, certainly 100% support that. We do still need to talk about those things that were on the capital plan for facilities that kind of got bumped off. We want to talk about, can we find alternative ways to fund them from our wonderful community? Can we get some of those things supported through, through this group and through the town? We're going to start having those conversations again next year. Last slide. Often questioned, what does the Board of Ed budget pay for? What is paid to participate pay for? And really, this is just kind of a quick, on the left-hand side, the line items for Board of Education budget, coaching salaries, transportation, the athletic trainer, and then pay-to-play, the things that we find out of pay-to-play on the right-hand side. And really, it's anything that doesn't fit into that category comes over here, uniforms, equipment, reconditioning, officials, the trainer, the second part of the trainer, we split the cost with the Board of Ed. Coaching education, we do cover some of the clinics and the things that they have to go to. Facility upkeeps and rentals. We don't do everything at Sims Re High School. We don't have a pool, we don't have a hockey rink. We do have to pay for those things to go out and use them elsewhere. And really, in the last couple of years, we've certainly been in the black, we've been able to make things work, but as costs have risen, this is a concern, and this structure is a concern for us moving forward. Does this make sense for us? Does this continue to work? We haven't raised pay-to-participate, and that's not what I'm advocating for, I'm just bringing into the group's attention, in, in many years, and we need to start really looking at this model and saying, is this the right model for us? Does it still work? What direction are we going in moving forward? And I just want to make sure that I bring that up.
At one point in time, we were the highest pay-to-play in the area. Are we still?
We are not the highest. There are seven out of the 32 schools in our conference that are pay-to-participate, and I have the information, I can certainly share it with this group. We are not the highest in general, as meaning across the board, and we're also not the highest in our additional sport fees, hockey and swimming, because they rent facilities, those parents pay an extra fee, and I can get the comparative data for you if you'd like.
Only seven of 32 are pay-to-play?
No, are more expensive than us.
No, our, no, 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 only, only seven.
Only seven of 32 schools do pay for play still?
All the rest of them are.
And where are we in that ranking?
We're one of those seven.
No, but are we higher?
I'd have to guess.
Okay, yeah, I'd be curious about that.
But in most communities, they're not charging high school athletes.
Did they ever and stopped?
No, they, they never entered into it.
Most schools do not have, do not have, what, 86 teams?
Right.
I mean, I mean, that's part of our, why we stretch away. It's tough.
It would be interesting to see the comparison.
And I just, if I could provide one more context while we're on the budget side, because I wasn't expecting as much conversation as we ended up about like paid coaches and unpaid coaches, so I want to just put a little perspective since this is a public meeting and it'll be on Sims Re Community Media. A paid coach at a high school level means a very intense commitment for that period of that season from fall, August to November, and for winter, November to March, and for spring, March to June, where it's basically an everyday commitment, including travel to games, travel, and for that period of time, the, like, a head coach is making, a very typical range would be about $6,500, and a, a J V coach is making something like about $5,000. So nobody is entering into a new tax bracket based on their coaching salary from high school coaching, they're doing it based on they want to be with the kids, they love them. And it used to be the model, quite frankly, before teaching salaries, it was how teachers made their extra money.
Right.
You know, and now that model has sort of outdated itself.
Do we, so all head coaches get the same salary?
No.
No.
Again, it's based on team size, team. It's in, it's in the, it's listed in the teacher's contract of what the.
And that applies to non-teachers as well as teachers? Okay.
Right. The stipend is determined through teacher negotiations, but both teachers and non-teachers hold the rules.
And you, you pay your coach based on how many kids play their sport?
It's kind of a tradition, it's been, they've rolled over from things that are there in the past, a lot of them. It, it could certainly probably use a review, but we do review, I mean, we're not terribly out of line with what other schools are paying their, or in, where I shouldn't say terribly out, we're in line with what most other schools are paying their coaches.
I think each position is listed.
Yes.
It is.
With a, with a number.
Right, right.
Okay.
We're not on the contract board.
Happy to share that. So Jeff, you have some information, some follow-up that, from questions, so we'll make sure that we get that information to you.
Yeah, and maybe, and I think, and part of the Hall of Fame thing also is that you do a golf tournament.
We do. So always paired with homecoming weekend, the first Saturday in October, we use Hot Matter Country Club, and we have a golf tournament fundraiser that helps offset some of the costs of the induction dinner. The dinner is always the first Saturday in June, so we try to keep it consistent so that we can get people when they're traveling. So the first Saturday in October is the golf tournament every year, and then the first Saturday in June is the induction ceremony.
You should invite us. Some of us golf, family.
You mean this, the first Saturday in January?
The first Saturday in June is the golf tournament.
But you have.
October is the golf tournament, the first Saturday in January.
January. January.
And nothing happens the first Saturday in January.
Correct.
Except for senior prom and.
Yes.
Other things.
And other things.
There's a lot going on in here. Graduation.
SATs.
What is the, um, the group that, that did Spirit Week like last week or two weeks ago? Was that yours?
That was Student Council.
Yeah. That, I forgot to say at my beginning thing, so I have to say right now, is you should do a plug for, if everyone's not on that Instagram page, they did this, like, bring everything but a back, but a backpack in. And some of our kids were insane. Like, it was so cool. And I got, I felt like for the first time, the kids were like really enjoying the school. Like, they always do, but I felt like it was kind of a back to the pre-COVID stuff.
What's the Instagram?
That was an intentional, there was a conversation about whether or not we could do that.
Yes.
And we kind of set a little bit of boundaries on, don't do these.
Correct.
But we want to give you the latitude and say, let's see how you do. We certainly want to support you. The kids asked for it and we were willing to give it to them. And it did for them. There was some very creative.
That was so creative and so fun and kudos to all that organized that.
That's what I was trying to do.
What's the Instagram page, do you know?
I don't know.
It was on, yeah, I'll look it up.
I had followed it.
Stop the sharing, Jen.
The Trojan Wall Instagram page and White House Student Council.
Yeah.
It was terrific.
It was a private story. It was on, it was kind of cool.
But I agree, it did feel just very unifying.
Yes, I agree.
In those activities, so. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you very much. All right. Amy.
So I know you all are missing budget season. Can't wait to talk finances, but just a quick update for you all tonight. So during the budget process, we kind of talked about where we are at this point in fiscal year '22. Not much has changed since a few weeks ago, actually. So we're still anticipating a loss of about $500,000. We have, we have instituted the spending freeze, which we're hoping to get about $100,000 from. This will leave us with a balance of about $400,000 that needs to be covered. We can take the $400,000 from our non-lapsing fund. And then in fiscal year '23, we're anticipating an increase in our open choice funding of $370,000. That was not part of the budget process because we were only notified after. So this will leave us, we'll be able to replenish those funds only using a net of about $30,000 from our non-lapsing fund. So this does not hinder our cliff funding plan that was proposed in the fiscal year '23 budget process. So that's some amazing news. Just to reiterate some of the causes for the, for the deficit, the increased special education and social emotional support services, the three teachers. Jeff spoke to the transportation issues that we've been having, changing vendors, the increased costs there. We are closing out the books for April in the next coming week. So we, we will do another evaluation of where we stand. And we'll send something out if anything changes significantly. And then I will also get you guys an update on the bleacher project from Jason Casey to see if he is seeing an anticipated increase in pricing due to the delay of the project. And then just one last thing I wanted to point out on the expenditure summary, the percentages spent to date. My first inclination when I looked at this is why is it not screaming that we have a loss compared to last year? And then I remembered that last year we had a loss due to COVID as well. So it's comparable to last year, last year versus last year. So I just wanted to point that out as well.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Amy, if I, if I followed you right though, you said you were going to sweep $400,000 this year?
Mm-hmm. And basically put it back in '23.
Okay, oh yeah, I was going to say, if the open choice funding is going to be increased, did you, what I was going to ask you was if it's going to be more, the $300,000 more next year, do you need to sweep the entire 400 this year by then?
So we do because we're not receiving the funding until fiscal year '23. So we're going to take it and then put it back.
Okay, works.
All right. Any other questions for Amy? If not, we have our second public audience, if anybody would like to speak.
Hi, Elizabeth Peterson again. I just wanted to say that I found the chair's comment a little off-putting that she was sorry that we couldn't hear, but the road show is more important than the audience hearing. I don't think you can, doesn't mean you can't have a road show, but you do need to take into consideration that it's a public meeting and the audience at a public meeting should be able to hear the meeting. I don't think it was done on purpose, but there's a loud refrigerator in the back. There's a fan. It's very difficult, even though we're relatively close to here. So I made my point there, but also the regular meeting location of the conference room with the Board of Ed is not even an appropriate venue. It's a little bigger than my kitchen. My kitchen's not a big space. If you're in there, there's like two tight rows. If you're in the row, you're, you get your back against the wall. And I know, I appreciate that the chair said that no one comes to meetings. I go to most of the meetings. But when people do go, the venue is not appropriate. We all know that when the state mask mandate was lifted, we knew a lot of people were going to come speak and the meeting was scheduled for the conference room. And I was taught to a lot of you directly and said, hey, people are coming. And so you get to scramble at the last minute and move the venue. It just doesn't make sense to me. It's not normal, the way the Board of Ed functions and having a meeting space. Simsbury is not a venue desert. We have some really nice spaces to have meetings. And it just doesn't make sense to me that you're stuck flat-footed when people do show up. Or when people do show up and they want to go to the meeting, the conference room, and they can't fit in and they're lined up in the hall. It's not normal. I'm asking the Board of Ed, take a step back and kind of look at what's normal. And I think we have a little bit more insight in what's normal. During the pandemic, we get to see on the news, Board of Ed meetings all over the country. People are in normal venues with audience seating. And you can see the Board of Ed setup. You can see people can hear. It's not jammed to a conference room or a space where people can't hear. So I'm asking the Simsbury Board of Ed to realize that things aren't really normal here. Thanks.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Hi, I'm Lori Boyko from 15 O'Kirst Road. And I know the meeting has gone really late tonight. And so I, I almost held off, but I, I don't want to keep holding what I have to say for another two weeks. And I didn't want to say it at the beginning because I thought we were going to be saying it waiting, you know, with the unified sports here. And I wanted to be mindful of the audience. First, I'm going to ask a rhetorical question because I know you guys don't answer us here. But are policy meetings and curriculum meetings and other Board of Ed subcommittee meetings public? Because while I certainly appreciate everyone who comes to these meetings, it seems like these meetings are more presentations and announcements. And I'm much more interested in the meat and potatoes of some of the real issues that are coming up in the schools and that don't seem to be discussed here at, at any level. So what are those issues? I had something all written out, but honestly, I don't even know where to start anymore. For the past 25 years, I have implicitly trusted the adults in our schools to be mindful of the best interests of our students, my children in particular. I have a 24-year-old and an 18-year-old. I never gave it a thought, what was being taught in the schools, because I expected that the adults had some level of filter or recognition of what was appropriate for students. But with what's been coming out in the news, I have been asking more questions of my student. My 15-year-old came home today with an assignment to look up online words like non-binary, bisexual, gender expression, dyke, queer, trans, ethereal, masculine, faggot, retard, chink, and sapphic, which for those who don't know, is very confusing in one of the lesser-known sexual orientations and gender identities, according to one website that I don't want my 15-year-old on. He read a book this year that I had no idea what was the content because I don't have time to read every book my son is assigned. I assume the adults have some idea about what they're assigning. The book was about a high school girl who was raped. Consequently, she has extreme mental health issues and is cutting. The author, because I did some research to try and understand the thinking behind this, explained that she wrote the diary of this girl in a way for the reader to experience firsthand the emotions of the character. We have kids with mental health issues and they're being put in the mind of someone who's been raped by the author. This is not what I want my 15-year-old or 14-year-old reading. I didn't even know about that until he was writing a paper and I asked him what about his paper was on. Another required freshman text, which I wrote to the English chair and said, my son is not going to read, was about normalizing pornography and waxes on for an entire page about masturbation. An entire page. It's full of foul language that I can't even repeat at this meeting. Most of you know me. I am not naive. I have three sons and I am absolutely not a prude. But I sincerely question the morality and wisdom of this. These are books that every freshman is reading. I cannot even wrap my head around the adults in the school being okay with this. Recently, it came to my attention that Section 5145 of the Simsbury Board of Ed policy states, quote, "School personnel should not disclose information that may reveal a student's transgender status or non-conforming presentation to others unless legally required to do so or unless the student says it's okay, the minor student, including their parents." So if my child expresses at school that he is having some gender confusion or possibly is transgender, the Board of Ed policy is that I am not to be told unless he says it's okay.